Okay, people go ahead and get started. This is seven o'clock. First, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here, both the citizens and our units. You know, just a basic piece of our democracy. It takes people willing to be involved, whether that's being informed with vote or willing to put themselves out there to, you know, be questioned and to be willing to serve in our, in our society. So, thank you very much for everyone who's here tonight. The format of this evening, what I wanted to do is to give each of the candidates firstly, opportunity to introduce themselves and to tell why they are interested in being a part of city council. And then I have six questions prepared in advance. We will rotate so that each person has the opportunity to be the first person to ask a question. And then if we have any questions from citizens, we'll pull out without a end. Now, one of the things we're gonna, I'm gonna kind of, I think, on the fly adapt to here. We do have a nice contingent of high school students here, some of which are actually old enough to vote now. And I know that they're here because a certain teacher gave them extra credit to be here. But, I guess maybe this is the liberty of being a mom of one of those two. I thought that a good challenge for them would be if they could come up with their own question representing the youth of our town. And hopefully, they have come up with a good thoughtful thing for us to consider because it is important that we have youth that are involved in our town too. So, I know they have play practice. So, I'm gonna give first to each of you your opportunity to introduce yourselves and then I'm gonna turn the mic over to the high school students for the first question. Okay. You just wanna go, you know, left to right? That'd be great.
Okay. My name's Sarah Wolf and I'm glad to be here this evening. I was raised in Maxville and I graduated high school from St. John. After high school, I moved to Woodshaw and I finished my degrees in business administration and I had a master's in management at a front university. And then I went on to get my RN degree. And I spent the 15 years in Woodshaw and just worked at a couple of different hospitals and for USDT 259 schools. Three years ago, I moved back to St. John to help my parents on their family's harm. So, I do a lot of the bookwork and everything for them. And I am running for city council because I want to be an advocate for this community. I lived in here for this community and I really, really like it. I think we have a lot of good people in this community and I want to continue to be, to see the community grow and to be an advocate for the residents, the businesses of this community.
I'm Tim McCurnan. I've lived in St. John for seven years. We've lived in Stafford County for nine years. My wife works here in the community. She works at GUT. And we have three kids in school and growing up, we moved around a lot and I never did have a town that I could call my hometown. And we've come to find that St. John has been a great community to us, to raise our family. And one of the biggest reasons to run is to put my, so I can, you know, put my name in the hat and try to do what I can for the community to provide a place so that my kids, when they grow up, they can say they're from St. John and to continue and grow. I have a, I graduated from Larnet, was my highest two years when I was there, and I had an associate's degree in diesel technology. I was, I was employed with Maxville, the school's transportation director. I recently had an employment change and I work for Adam Storms and they sell Pioneer CP. And, and my employer's on board with running for council. I know I don't work in town, but they are on board. We have an extremely flexible schedule to run around and leave back in town if need be.
My name's Isai Masias. I've been a lifelong resident here since 2000, about five years old when I moved here. I own a construction business. I think a lot of you know that here and it's just, I'm young, I'm trying to make a difference in the community at a young age and I'm running for reelection. I think we've done good in town. We've done a lot and I want to keep doing that and make it a, a town that my kids can be proud of when they're here.
My name is Mark Bryant and I've served on council since 2013 and I've been the mayor of St. John for the past three and a half years. I've lived in St. John since 2005 and I've been working at the high school as a vocational instructor for the past 14 years. I also work at Vivint Memorial Library and I've been there for the past 12 years. When my parents first moved here in 1991, they told me how much they loved living in this city, especially my mother since she lived here in the 1930s when my grandfather was building a Santa Fe railroad through St. John. After my father passed away in 1994, my mother told me about the overwhelming support she received from this community. I saw the same type of support firsthand when my uncle Frank Barrett had passed away in 2007. As a United States Marine Corps veteran, I carry with me a sense of duty and service to my city, giving back to the community that showed kindness and compassion to my family and myself over the years. It's for those reasons why I would like to continue to serve my community as a city councillor. Thank you.
My name is Donna Hilton-Reilly and I work as the county crazier for the oil and gas side here in St. John. My family came here about 10 years ago. My son is the red director and also is with the school for several different areas. The reason I am running for city council is because I also want to make a, I want to hear, have my voice heard and I want to do good things for the city of St. John. I think diversity is good and I think that having a diverse background, that I think that would be great for the city of St. John. So, that's all.
My name's Greg Calz. For those of you who don't know me, we moved to, wife and I, our family moved here in March of 2019, in July or January of 2019. I started with the sheriff's department as a deputy. It was promoted to honor sheriff in December. And reason I'm running for city council, I'm using another opportunity to serve the community. And I'd like to see us be a little more proactive rather than reactive when it comes to our infrastructure. I'd like to see us develop plans and start setting the money aside to repair, to replace things rather than wait until it's past the point of needing repair and then try to figure out where we're coming up with the money to do that. I'd also like to see us develop a plan to get better, more housing in here. It's great that we're turning down a lot of these old dilapidated houses, but we also need to figure out where we're gonna replace them. This community is really nice. We love living here and housing is a big issue here. I know trying to hire people in, trying to find places for them to live in county and in St. John, really affordable, trying to get a place that they want to even rent. So, we need to tackle that and to get more people in here, get families in here and help keep this community going.
Okay, St. John, hi. You are our future. What is on your minds and what would you like to ask the candidates?
So, we came up with a question just to kind of get your guys' opinions if you're, for like plans, if you're gonna plan to be building new homes or businesses around town or if you guys would want to do something more along the lines of redoing houses that are already in town or building vacant businesses.
You wanna, just wanna jump in and address that?
I can start. Yeah, I kinda wanna touch on both things there. I think that housing is definitely an issue in our community. There's very few houses for sale, very few places to rent and I think that is something that I know that ECO, ECO just put up a house in town. I think that's a great opportunity and hope to see more of that. I also know there are empty businesses, but, and it's hard to bring businesses in, but we also have to remember we have several businesses in our community and supporting local is one of the number one things that we need to do to keep our community alive. Yes, that sometimes supporting local will cost you a little bit more, but when you consider the fact that you can get your groceries here in town and drive, I think it's some three quarters of a mile for me to go to the grocery store, that I can go pay, I may have to pay a little bit more, but if I have to drive to Great Ben, I've got three kids and a wife and they're gonna make me take them out for dinner and, and I may save $2 on item, but I just spent a whole lot more on gas and going out to eat. And one of the major things is just to continue to support local so that some of our businesses can thrive and then that might open the door for more to come in.
We, uh, we've done, we used to have a land bank where the city council was on it. We've designated individuals to be on the land bank now, but we're open to doing what we can to help individuals. We donated land to ECO DVO. She's gonna build, I think, is it four more houses here in town? And, I mean, we'll donate land. We've, we've acquired land that we're willing to give to people to build and do what we can as far as businesses. I mean, we've, we've got guys that wanna build houses here and we've done what we can to, to help anybody that wants to build a business here, build a house, do what we can. And I think we've gone down a good road with it and we're clearing out old houses so new ones can be built, but I think we're doing good right now.
City council and the land bank has done everything that they could to try and promote getting property within the city of St. John and to make sure that the dilapidated buildings that are here within St. John are torn down. And we're trying to get more people to build within the city of St. John because without housing, we're not to be able to grow. We can't, and there are people that wish to move here who are working within the city of St. John, but they can't move here because there's no housing. Working with ECO DVO, the land bank and city council is doing everything possible right now to make that happen. Without housing, we can't attract new businesses and it starts with that. And I understand that the youth of our community, there's really nothing here for you to do and that's something that needs to change. You know, if we want to continue to grow as a community, we need to make sure that we have those type of things such as new businesses, housing, more community involvement on that.
I think that everybody that's associated with the city, everybody in town knows that there's a problem with housing. I think it's on the radar for everybody to look at. Carolyn is doing what she can with ECO DVO, like they said, the land bank is there. One of the things that I think that we need to worry about or concentrate on is anytime that we build an ECO DVO house, it's tax exempt. It takes money away from our county and our cities. So, I would think that looking at something might be where we can try to develop something that actually gets housing for people, some kind of incentives that we still have the tax money coming into our county. As far as businesses, the same thing. If there's some way that we can open up doors for new businesses, then definitely that's something that we can look at, that I think all of us would be happy to see that.
So, I think some of these houses, if we can repair them rather than tear them down, I think it'd be a good idea maybe to partner with the school, with you guys that are already doing the construction on the houses where you guys are going down, where all the insides you got of them, that we've done. I think there's a reason that we could work with the city and the school on that. Also, you know, Habitat for Humanity may be an option where they come in and help build houses and we need volunteers to do that. That would be something where you guys would be able to get involved in on a weekend or something, come out and help put up a house. When you have quite a few people there doing it, it doesn't take long. I helped build two of them in Sterling and I worked over there and in two days' time, a dozen guys, we got everything up and they were ready to start on interior work in two days just with the help. So, we need volunteers to do things like that as well. And as far as, for things that you guys do in this community, I think you should come to city council, maybe as a voice, what your guys' interests are and see if the city can figure out how to bring in something to do. When I was a kid, it was arcades and bowling alleys. Things have changed since then. You guys are probably not interested in that because you have games on your phones. But there's a voice from you guys of what the city wants, what you guys are seeing. We need to come to council and address that.
Okay, I've gone around and talked to some residents in the community and that is one of the biggest things that they have said was the housing. I think it's great that the students want to get involved. I think it's also great that if they would come and voice their opinions on the city council, that, that's, that's wonderful. I also think that the more community, more information we can get as far as our residents and what they think, we can take that as a, as a team and, and look at that in city council and talk about what, what would be best for the community. All right, like I said, I have six prepared questions. I believe Tim started first, right? So, maybe I'll start with Isai and rotate through this way. The next question that I have is related to the time that you invest in the work related to this job. So, for two of you that have been on council, I'll ask about what you have already done and for the rest of you, maybe what you would see yourself in the future doing. But, the question being that most any organization has terminology and customs and information you need to get that one needs to learn becoming a part of this leadership. What time do you have available for professional development related to this job and where would you look to as good sources of information related to city management?
I, when I got on city council, it's, it's kind of a whole different deal than I thought it was gonna be. So, benefit of having me reelected is when we're elected and we get in there, it's kind of a whole different ballgame than I thought it was gonna be to, to do. And it takes, for me, I mean, it was a year and a half, two years to be able to kind of get used to how things work, what resources we have, the money we have to use and it's just, it's been a process. And so, like, I'm excited if I could be elected. I've got four more years with experience to make a difference here and it's just, it's, how would I say it? It's something, I guess, exciting. It's just, I've been able to learn a lot and take that and run the last two years and to have four more years to do that and know how it works is exciting to me. It's just been something that, um, I've learned how it works and I spend sometimes hours between meetings talking to people, doing research, just talking, getting information, preparing for the next meeting. And it's just, I have a lot of open time, a lot of, being self-employed, I can take phone calls, I get calls from people, I can just talk to the community. I'm really open to it just because I'm a self-employed, so.
When I first, excuse me, when I first got on a city council, one of the first things that I did was go to the Kansas League of Municipalities and started getting educated on how being a city councilman works. I learned several things from them, including what it takes to get things accomplished as a city councilman. And when you're a city councilman, it's not just your vote, it's a group of people that have to work together as a team to make sure that things happen within the city for the people of St. John. In my job as a vocational instructor, I'm generally around town at different businesses with my students that job shadow at the various businesses and that gives me an opportunity to speak with several people all around town and get their ideas and thoughts on what's happening and what they would like to see. My flexibility is pretty much devoted to my school, but I'm able to go out and do the things that I need to do to devote to being a city councilman and understanding what the community needs and wants.
And a few questions that I just wanted if you want to plug it out and roll away.
As a possible elect for city council, my phone number is out there for everybody. My door, everybody probably knows where I live. It'll always be open. I work at the county crazier's office, a lot of people come in there. So, I wanna have, I wanna make sure that everybody has that accessibility too. I think that as a city council member, the best thing you can do is not reinvent the will on a lot of things, but use resources. We've had city council members in the past that have been good city council members who have resigned for some reasons and, so they're not there, but it doesn't mean that we can't use them resources. Also, other towns, also, I think Isai said it or maybe Mark, that you wanna use the resources of your other council members. They've been doing this for a while, they know what's going on. So, I would just say some of them resources and like Mark said, go out and look for things that are gonna help you do the best that you could do for your community. We're here to serve you guys and the serving shouldn't just be on Tuesday nights every two weeks. So, I think that's about it.
Well, yeah, I enjoy talking to people, that's why I'm in the career I'm in. I enjoy problem solving. It's nice, you got five council members, you take bits and pieces of ideas from everybody, put them together and cope with the one that best fits the city and the citizens. So, I, that's all I really have for that one.
Okay, I think being on city council would be a, a big learning curve for me since I have not been on city council. With that said, I am a team player and I think using the resources as your other people on city council is, it would be extremely helpful. Also, going out in the community and talking to the residents and what their concerns are. I am very flexible, very much available to hear everybody's concerns and then use the resources on the city council and use other people that have been, had experience with that.
I would say I would be behind the eight ball coming into city council. I've never served on a council before. I have served on church boards and some other boards and, and what I found from those, when I had questions, my best options were to reach out to the other council members or some older people that have been in council and been around for a while and use those resources. And I, and I believe in extra training too. If there's a event or something going on that you can go out and get some experience and some knowledge from, that it's well worth your time to take it and go do it.
Next two, next two questions. Next two questions have to do with budget because it is a big part of, of what a city is responsible for doing. So, the first one is, what do you know about the budget? The overall size of spending, the categories of spending and where the revenue comes from?
The overall spending that city council does generally is to make sure that the community is well taken care of and that money comes from the tax revenue that we receive from the, the city itself. One of the things that city council has been doing is making sure that our infrastructure is taken care of. Recently, city council has had mayors, you know, go through the infrastructure on our sewers, inspecting those and lining the more damaged areas and making sure that those are properly repaired. With the budget, we generally have a budget meeting. We take care of the most important things that are of importance and we move through that with generally just making sure that the money is spent properly and accordingly to what the city needs.
As far as the budget, I would say that that is something that I will have to learn. I have been watching the financials. I did just get them the other day. I'm, I'm well aware of where the funding comes from. We have some COVID money is what everybody calls it if you just wanna refer it to that. We do have money that is donated from families. We do have like the municipality money. So, there's a lot of things that go into our budget, a lot of accounts that make that up. And like I said, it's something I'll have to learn. Like I said, I have been watching the financials for several months. I've been going to the council meetings on and off for the last probably 12 weeks. So, I mean, it is something I'm well aware of, just don't know how it plays into the budget. So, it can be something worth watching and learning.
I was a fire chief in Pawnee Rock for five years, so I, I had to do my own budgets there. Biggest thing with our budgets was, you know, this taxpayers' money. You don't, you spend what you need to spend, you don't overspend it, you don't get stuff that you don't need. And at the end of the year, hopefully, you have enough left over that you can move it into a special account to help pay for other projects later down the road.
Okay, I'm, I'm right there with Donna on this. I'm, that's something, the budget, I will have to learn as I, as I go. I know that there's a lot that goes into it, but I think as long as we look out for what's best for our community, that's good. But that is something that I will have to, to learn more of and to rely on other city council members to learn, learn that from, so.
I will agree with them. I do, I do not know the budget. I do know a lot of our revenue comes from our electric plant, which we're very fortunate to have. I mean, we've lived here seven years and I can only think of a handful of times that our power has ever been out, which is very thankful, even though none of us probably like our city bill every month. But that is what pays a lot of our salaries. And I know on our budget, there, there is a lot of things that go into a budget and there's a lot of projects and a lot of different things that the city has to do to maintain our infrastructure, like they said, or, or just anything. I know I've been recently watching, they're looking into maybe putting in cameras and some of the things that may not exactly be in the budget, but I think it's well worthwhile that when we do spend over certain amounts, I mean, pick, I mean, just get a second bid on it, get a second quote, make sure what your, the first guy is selling you is proper and what is, you know, and he's not just taking you for, for the run and make sure that it's adequate so that when it comes to the budget, we're not blowing the budget.
Are you with that question, Carolyn?
What do you know about the budget, the overall size of spending, the categories of spending and where revenue comes from?
The city has roughly, it's about $4.8 million is what we have. It doesn't mean that we have it cash to spend right then and there, but that's how much the city has. We've done a really good job, I think, with it, with investing back into the town, into roads. We've done a lot of asphalt and chat. If you guys seen people running around the town, we've got about so little over a mile, I think, that they've been relining sewer. We've done a good job with spending towards our infrastructure. I would probably, I'm not for certain, but we have over a million dollars more from when I got on city council to date in our account and I think we're on a good route here just knowing that we have more money now than we did when I first got on. And we've spent money on, we got the water tower that's gonna get redone, the streets, like I said, sewer and the equipment and most of our money, not knowing exact percentage, I would say probably 60% of our money comes in from our electric department on electricity and that's something that we're pretty well off with that other city and that's something that we're pretty well off with, that other cities don't have electricity to bring in that income and we've done good, I think. I mean, that's my opinion.
Also related to the fiscal side of things, we've talked about some of the priorities that we have, but we also know that it's a tough budgetary environment right now, given that property valuations on which local government depends have declined significantly, particularly for agriculture and oil, which maybe affects the county a little more than the city, but nonetheless. Describe the way you would approach making the decisions to fund local needs with limited resources. And this is really probably the key. What is your way of establishing priorities or making trade-offs between competing but valuable needs?
I think that's kind of a hard question without seeing exactly what you're itemizing. I mean, you know, anytime that something is brought to us or the current city council members, I think that they have to look at everything that's been brought to them and make that decision. Unfortunately, I think that, you know, unfortunately, I think sometimes you have to sacrifice one for the whole of the city and sometimes people don't understand that. I think the biggest thing is, is to run the city budget like it's your own budget, I think, and your own business. I think that right now, we just need to be conservative on a lot of things and, you know, see what the future's going to hold for a little bit because of the uncertainty. But I think again, it's going to be what's brought to us and then how we handle it is going to be, to prioritize is going to be what's in front of us at the time.
Yeah, I agree. Prioritizing, you know, start with your highest priority station, start with that and, you know, when you get towards the end of the list or maybe some stuff that needs to be pushed back. Hopefully the economy picks up in the next year. It's not looking real good right now, but you know, don't necessarily completely take those projects and stuff away that you need to be getting done, but definitely if we have to put something on the back burner, we have to figure out what is more important at the time than what we don't really need at that moment. And then we'll just hope the economy picks back up and we start getting better money back in.
Yes, I think once we know what we have in front of us, we have to prioritize. That's a big thing. And until we know those things, you know, once we know them, then we can work on prioritizing and seeing what needs to come first and so forth.
I think in a perfect world, we'd all like to have equal amount of money distributed to all of our budget items, but we can't do that and we know. And I think one of the biggest ways to find is to review your past year review, where are we falling short? Where are we having problems? Review where we're doing well and then analyze that and then move the money where it needed to be to fix some of those problems where we're running short.
Again, Carolyn, can you repeat that?
In the tough budgetary environment right now, given that property valuations on which local government depends have declined, describe the way in which you would approach making the decisions to fund local needs with limited resources. What is your way of establishing priorities or making trade-offs between competing but valuable needs?
Well, frankly, I don't really think the economy has really affected us a whole lot, knowing that our income or the majority of our income comes from electricity. We've all been using electricity like before, really nothing's changed for me. And like I said, we got more money than we did when I first got on council, so I mean, that's what I have to say about it.
Going under the scenario that you described Carolyn, if we have limited resources, we need to make sure that we prioritize each and every item that comes in front of council, see which is most important to the city and community of St. John. Look at it, make sure that it is the proper fit for the city of St. John and make sure that we are making the correct decision to properly and fiscally be responsible for spending that money to the citizens of St. John.
Do you see opportunities for increased efficiency within the city?
There's always where you can increase efficiencies, you know, without actually having seen everything currently, you know, there's cost-effective ways of tools that you can get to help your employees, make them more efficient. You know, business-wise, I mean, for our power plant stuff, you guys, they've already started upgrading the generators and things down there, the newer equipments, helping our employees out there as well. I mean, they just got new loaders, you know, so equipment-wise to help out your employees in four more efficient areas in that way, that helps cut down a cost of spending on, you know, wages-wise, if you got better equipment to help with the employees where they can upkeep the streets and the water and the sewer and all the other utilities around here.
Do you see opportunities for increased efficiency within the city?
Yes, I do. Helping the businesses grow is the key, supporting the city workers, helping them with concerns coming into city council, looking at those, how we can be more efficient to help people.
I think that to help with some efficiency with the city, we always have room for improvement. I think that being able to work together will help improve things, looking after our city employees, seeing what their needs are, because if an employee is happy, they're going to work for you. They're going to do things that you're not going to want to do or they're going to be more willing to help you out and more willing to go the extra mile than an employee who's not happy. So that somewhere that where we can be more efficient is to work towards what our employees' needs are.
We've done a lot as far as investing, people have kind of seen our old fire department is our city guys' office and shop now. We've invested a lot of money in tools, things that the guys need, equipment, trucks. We just kind of, we've been trying to keep up with investing in equipment to where our guys have what they need to not have breakdowns, to be able to keep doing what they're doing. Could we be a little more efficient for our guys? Yeah, but they're doing a good job. I've always been open to having these guys do more overtime work if they need to do overtime, whatever they need. I mean, we've really gotten it for them. Our police department, we've been invested a lot of money on radars, vehicles, I mean, just where our people are not having trouble on a daily basis to keep doing what they need to do.
Do you see opportunities for increased efficiency within the city?
Absolutely. I think that there are several things that we can do to make things more efficient within the city of St. John. Some of that is making sure that all of our employees are sufficiently supplied with the equipment that they need and I think that city council has done a really good job at doing this. We need to make sure that all of our employees are well-equipped, that they are well-trained and when you have well-equipped and well-trained employees, that makes them more efficient. And they, when they're more efficient, they work better and when they work better, they're a lot more happier in the job that they perform.
I agree with what everybody said. One of the things that I would just probably be a little bit hesitant or maybe speak up about is like, we want everybody to be efficient, but we also want to watch budget. I know we do have loans for equipment and we definitely want to make sure that we're on top of that, that we're not, you know, we want to be efficient, but we also want to watch that cost, so.
Next question I have is, what would you most like to see happen within the city of St. John in the next five years? And what specifically can city government do to play a role in making that happen?
I think looking at the housing is a big one. Developing more housing for people to help get more people in, help grow our businesses and support our businesses is a big one. That's a lot of what people are saying around the community when I've asked them is our housing situation. And so I would like to see improvement over that over the next five years, looking at what we can do to help support our community.
When she asked that question, one of the things I think of is, our police department, for instance, this is from the outside looking in, I've not been on council, I don't sit through executive sessions, but I can see that we have a huge employment turnover. We're constantly having different officers, different chiefs, different items and I don't know why and I don't have the answer for that, but I do see we also are providing new cars, new equipment and so are they getting the equipment, but where is our problem lying of why our employees aren't staying? Why aren't they wanting to stay in our community? And I'd like to look into that.
For me, I think it would be housing. We've done what we can, we've helped Carolyn a lot with land, I mean, we donated the land, we've mowed it. It's not easy, where do you come up with money to build a house? But we've done what we can to work with Carolyn on it. I do think that is one of our biggest issues. We've done a lot with the infrastructure. I mean, when I first got on, that's something I really wanted to focus on and that's something that I think council's done a good job on, is investing in all that and housing, but it's not easy, where's the money come from? But we're willing to work with people with giving them land and just do what we can to do that until we can come up with a good plan and see where that money can come from because it's just not easy. It is something I would like to focus on if I get re-elected here, the next few years, come up with a plan, see what we can do.
As everyone has set up here, housing is one of the most important things that the city of St. John needs at this moment. Without housing, we can't bring new people into this community. If we don't have housing, then people who are trying to open up businesses here within St. John have no place to live and they're not going to travel very far from where they're at right now to come to St. John. And what they need to do is have housing for them and their employees. One of the things that we need to do is work hand-in-hand with EcoDevo, making sure that the land bank is supported and city council, making sure that all of the needs are met by making sure that we are planning properly and being fiscally responsible with all of the money that the city of St. John generates.
Well, I agree with the housing, bringing housing in that business owners can live in and people that can work 40-hour weeks can support our businesses. Not only housing, but daycare. Nobody has mentioned daycare. You can't have any growth without a daycare, so where are we at on that? Daycare, housing, jobs, putting back into your community. Anytime there's a fundraiser at the school that helps them students, anytime there's a fundraiser out in the community, it helps them. You know, there's so many opportunities that I know everybody's saying housing, but we have to look at the whole picture. We can't just narrow in on one thing because like I said, if you don't have a daycare, you're probably not going to bring housing in.
So yeah, broken record housing, 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 housing. You know, bringing housing brings in people, people comes in, you get people that wanted to start their own businesses. We've got plenty of empty buildings around the square that need businesses in them. I don't know if there's basically grants we can use to revitalize those buildings to make them more attractive to people. That's something we should look into. You know, the city's done a great job with the sewer projects already, you know, the water tower. We need to start looking at plans on how we're going to maintain those projects that have already been done so that they, you know, the cost of it doesn't come back in the end, you know, faster than it needs to. I'd like to see us continue on getting our streets repaired. Our streets are not as bad as some of our towns in the county. I drive them all, I know, but there are some streets that need some attention too and I think we need to keep moving along with our streets as well. And like I said, we've got the water tower projects that are going there, the sewer project, there's going to be other lines of sewers that are not done yet that we need to start looking at future-wise and start getting money, things set aside for that as well.
We've talked about a lot of different important needs of the city, some of which involve spending or work that can't be accomplished in a year. How would you suggest long-term or strategic planning be accomplished? And maybe part of that question is that it's not always so easy just to articulate a goal without the, I think it's fair to say, we haven't had a formal strategic plan in this city for quite some time. Maybe part of the question is, do you think that it's valuable to have one and if so, how do we go about getting that done?
I do think that a strategic plan would be great to have and put in place so that when we have the problems come up down the road and we are planning ahead to know what we're going to do and to come up with one, I'm not exactly sure. I know it's an expensive to do that, to have it done for you. I know that I think our current council has reached out to other communities and they're trying to do some things on their own, which I think is great, to come up with a strategic plan and I think that's something that they should continue and whoever is elected to continue to come up with that strategic plan and not let that fall.
We've looked into it as far as a straight strategic plan where it's in writing. You know, those plans are typically years and we've kind of realized the tough thing is, is a current council can go and make the plans and we kind of have a process in our head of how things work and we have our plans, but council changes. People's minds change, the way people think change, so it's hard to actually just write out a plan for 10 or 15 years because council can change, the way council things will change and it's something that, we don't have it in writing, but Jason, the city or street guy, has done a good job. He does have a plan for a couple of years at a time. Hey, this is what I want to look at doing next year, this is what we're doing this year, this is what it's going to cost and we're on a good route and we've invested good amount of money in infrastructure that I think we're on a good route and he's done good, Jeff's done good with our electricity. We're doing what we can here, but it's tough to actually write out a 10- or 15-year plan because people's minds change and the way we think changes, but we're getting things done and it's just, it's not easy to just write it out.
As it's been said, a strategic plan is important. However, council changes every four years, priorities change during that time and what I believe we need to do is involve all of our city employees to make sure that they are on the same page. They are the ones that make sure that things are running smoothly. They suggest to council what needs to be done and we need to trust in them to do their jobs. Council has done a really good job of late, listening to our department heads implement the ideas and making sure that things run smoothly within the city of St. John. We need to just make sure that when council is prioritizing all of these ideas, that we follow through in the time that we are there. And when council does change, we trust in our department heads to continue to implement And when council does change, we trust in our department heads to continue to implement those ideas.
Sure. Many city-
Short version. Yeah, many city needs involve spending or work that cannot be accomplished in a year. How would you suggest that long-term or strategic planning be accomplished, or maybe a variation of that? Is it something that is needed to be done?
So I've always believed in a strategic plan. I know a lot of cities use them. However, this year, in the last year, couple of years, it's been so crazy, I don't know if I support that 100% at this time. I do think that you have to have a plan as a city, and I think you have to reach towards them goals to improve your city. That's about all I really want to say about that, because I think that's one of the things that when you get in and you can see the issues that lie, and what kind of timeframe you're talking about fixing a lot of them issues, and then, then look at what kind of strategic plan you're looking at, if you're looking at a 10-year, or 5-year, you know, 15-years, so.
Yeah, I think it comes back to your city guys, you know, telling you, you know, at the water department, if he says, "I've got water lines in this part of town that we're going to need to replace in the next five years, and we need to start planning that." Instead of wait until we've got water lines that are breaking all over over there, then try to figure out where we're going to come up with that money. It goes, like I said, it comes back to those guys. They know the, they know their stuff, they know what's, where their lines are, how, what kind of shape they're in. Same as power. You know, Jeff knows what power poles he's going to need to replace here and there. We need to start planning ahead for those. And as far as, you know, yeah, on the, geez, it's been a long day, folks, sorry. But yeah, I said, department heads are the ones that are going to have to come to council and say, "This is what we see, this is what we've got going," and then it's going to be up to the council prioritize which projects we need to start setting aside for, and for how long. Same as equipment. Instead of running our equipment until it completely runs in the ground, maybe we need to start looking at replacing it after so many years, so it has a better trade-in value on it. You know, we can't just keep running trucks, I mean, like our pickups, even the city police cars. Little bit of driving in town, low speeds, they do a lot of idling, it's really hard on them. You know, you might start thinking about, you know, so many years, we're going to run this vehicle, and we're going to replace it. Those are all things that need to be looked at, and also on a timeline, so we have stuff, like I said, for better trade-in value on things. Like, you know, when you run your loaders, if you run them down into the ground, you got nothing to trade in, nothing to sell.
I think a strategic plan is really important. I think you have to look at the budget. I think you have to look not only in ahead of time, but you have to look back a year and what has been good, and move forward with your city employees. Communication is a, is a big one with the city council, the team, working as a team, getting a good plan, and maybe not putting it out 10 years. It may go three years or four years, depending on what the needs are. And that's based on your city employees and what communication they can bring to city council.
Completes all of the questions that were prepared in advance. I'll open it up and if there's any questions from the floor.
I watched the city council members on TV past few months and a year here. We've had some members show up and then not show up for several meetings, and then they want to run the city, and they're not even there to make their decisions. So if you've got time to run a business on the side or work somewhere out of town, it's a priority that you're going to be here when the city council needs you on Tuesday nights.
I'll be there unless my job has me out, doing something at that time. You know, I'm currently working days. There's times where I get called and I need to go out at night, and there may be a time I need to miss a meeting because of that job. But for the most part, I am here all the time. I very rarely even leave the county, let alone town, but I'm here, so, you know, I will be at every meeting as long as I'm not called out for work.
Everybody on this council is here for the city in that they want to make that promise that they will be here for that. I know sometimes life gets in the way, but to me, it should be rare. I think that we have an obligation to be at the city meetings. And I agree with Alvin, I haven't seen that consistency, and I would like to see that as maybe an elect, or maybe not, so.
As a city council member and as the mayor, I've missed a grand total of five meetings due to various things. The most recent one was because I was sick with COVID. But after I was well enough, I started back in and resumed my position as the mayor. I think that it's important that city council members attend each and every meeting. That's what you elect us to do, to be your representatives, to attend meetings, to make sure that we are coming to council and listening, doing our research, educating ourselves, and representing you to the best of our abilities.
Being self-employed, I am very flexible to hearing people out and doing my research, but I have meetings I do miss. I make sure that when we do have very important topics, I find the time to go to the meetings. Today, lately, I've been working out of town about an hour away. I do leave, I try to work as many hours as I can, and I just, tonight, I left early to be here. When I need to be there, I'll be there.
I would like to say I agree with him. It is, I do watch the meetings. I think the SSC TV Channel 3 is one of the greatest things ever. But I do watch the meetings, and it does frustrate me when people sign up to, and are voted in, and they don't show up to the meetings. I mean, we have all kinds of technology out in this world. If you can't make it to a meeting, we all know what Zoom is, we've got to do it. I mastered first grade math last year, when school shut down. If you can't make it there, you can always zoom in to the call. Jamie has the technology. You can do it on the computer, you can do it from your phone. So if you can't actually be there, there's still opportunity to do, to do the meeting and be involved.
Okay, for me, I would not be sitting up here if I was not going to be able to attend the meetings. I'm here to serve the residents of this community, to be an advocate for them. And like I said, I wouldn't be sitting up here if I was not going to be attending the meetings. I've never been on city council, so there's a lot to learn for me, and that is, that's important for me to go to those meetings and learn and be able to serve the community of St. John.
Are there any other questions from the group?
I think Tim brought this up about the police department. We have, I've noticed, like everybody else, it's moved in and out, shorthanded, overtime, and then we got, I heard we have an issue with the county also, that they're not on the same page, like when we have officers that need off, or we don't have enough officers, they're not willing to help out the city. Well, how would you guys handle that?
I did bring up the question about the police department and switching hands, and that is something I'd like to look into to find out a solution. I know, like, we had a part-time officer. I've got to know him after the car accident we were in, and I know we just lost him to Stafford due to compensation and pay. I mean, is there a solution to that? Can we, can we raise that? I mean, I don't know, I don't know the budget exactly. But I think there is a solution for that, because it does worry me that we have a constant turnover in our police department, and I think that causes some negligence and some sloppiness in our police department. I mean, when I see, and I'm dropping my kids off for school, and I'm seeing little kids standing in the front seat, and they're driving by our police department, and they just wave as they go by, that frustrates me. And I think that something could be done, and something needs to be fixed to make that better.
I can address that from the county and city side. So yes, there was an issue prior with some things that were going on. That issue has been, has left. They're your current chief now. We have a great working relationship with them. We do cover once she needs to be gone. You guys currently have one that's at the academy. You'll be there till January sometime. And, you know, you're down to two officers, and they need time off too. And there are times that we do cover the town for them. That's not very often they ask us to do that, because they've really stepped up and done what they need to do. You're losing your next one here next month, so you're going to be down to your chief for a little bit. That's going to be it. They do have a part-time word, I believe he'll start once his vest comes in. I actually got two part-times. So there are two part-timers, but there again, they both have jobs, and getting them scheduled into work is kind of when they can help out. The county has no problem helping cover them, we need to help cover. The city actually helped me out just here a couple of weeks ago. They went and did a transport for me because the sheriff was gone when his dad passed away. I was the only one here, and I had a deputy down with COVID, and I had another one out of town with funeral too. So there's just, you know, three of us around, or two of us for the county that was here at the time, and he had to go, we had to go to two different towns to do transports. So he went, chief felt more comfortable going and getting transport for me out of Pratt rather than trying to help cover the county. So we do work together. The new chief they have over in Stafford, we work well with him, they work well with us. We all three, all three departments are together right now and working very well. And since this has all changed, we've gotten a lot more accomplished. We had a ring of thefts go on in July, I don't remember if you guys have all seen all that in the Facebook postings, but between the three departments working together, over one weekend, we locked up six people. And that was because we all worked together, and we haven't had that for a little while. So that is going better. As far as turnover in your police department, it's everywhere, guys. There are openings all over the state for officers. Nobody wants to work for them, nobody wants to apply. We currently are trying to add another deputy to our positions. I have one application, and it's been open for over a month. It's just the politics with everything going on. You got guys that are taking early retirement, guys are getting completely out of law enforcement just because of what's going on. And it's not just a St. John thing, it's everywhere.
That's something I would say is, we don't have people knocking on our door, "Hey, I want to be a police officer." Right now, the last few years, there's just no officers, and I think we could all think about why nobody wants to be an officer. The officers we do have, I think we've done a great job taking care of them the best we can. If I could pay a guy $30, $40 an hour, I'd do it, but we can't afford it. We're paying more than we ever have, I will say that. We're trying to pay the best we can. We've gave our officers their new life vest, bulletproof vest. We've invested in radars, vehicles, anything we can invest to keep our officers happy, we've done. Sometimes we can't afford what they deserve, but we do what we can with what we have to spend.
The St. John Police Department has definitely had some issues. We've had some issues with other agencies, as Greg has stated. Without getting into too much detail on it, the issue that was happening between the Sheriff's Department and St. John PD has been resolved, and it has moved on. I am for one, as the mayor of St. John, am grateful for the Sheriff's Department helping with Chief Perez and policing the city of St. John, and making sure that the community is safe and secure. I think that, as Greg said, it's not just a St. John issue, it's an issue happening all throughout this country. You just don't have the people that want to become law enforcement anymore. There are various reasons for that. All you have to do is just turn on the news, and you can see it every day. It's unfortunate, but it happens. And in smaller towns like St. John, not everybody is pounding at the door to get to little towns, and we should be grateful for those that are still staying here, that want to live in a little town like St. John and perform the job that often is thankless. And I for one really appreciate the efforts that the Sheriff Department has done, and our PD with Chief Perez being the interim chief right now, and with Officer Craven getting ready to graduate from the academy. I for one am grateful for him to be stepping up and coming here to our community to help police and protect us.
I have also, you know, been to the council meetings, and there is an issue with maybe the pay that we are paying our officers. And I think it goes back to that budget. Like Mark said, yes, it is a small town, but this is a prime example of what we can do as city council members, is we are talking about, and I mean as we, as the city, there is a proposal for some cameras being put around the town. Some people have said $30,000. Maybe instead of the cameras, then maybe we need to look at paying our officers more. We need to look at the fact of, do the cameras, installing the cameras, what percentage of crime went down? So there's, there's different avenues, and that's where, like for us, getting in there and asking them questions, and being able to try to resolve some of this is possibly something we can do, so.
I think too, we have to ask ourselves, or we have to ask why. Why is there a turnover? And it goes back, what Donna was saying, is looking at the budget, finding out why, why people are coming in and leaving. Also brainstorming, using our city council members to talk about what we can do to help our officers in keeping the community safe.
Are there any other questions? Unless you have any other thoughts, some, you know, to sum up before we leave? I would just like to say, you know, I've kind of reflected here as we've been, as we've been talking, that, you know, you've kind of contrasted that problems that exist here exist in other parts of the country and nationally, but one of the things that struck me that we're not dealing with tonight is, is an environment of a lot of, I don't know, just name-calling, or distrust, or just, you know, there's just been a lot of civility, and I really appreciate that. I think that maybe that's something that we haven't talked about, is very important in, in the leadership of an organization, is just that culture of service and, and willing to, to talk in a civil way. So whoever wins, I just, I sense that tonight among everyone involved, crowd and everything, and I appreciate that, so. My two cents, I guess, as a citizen, so. I don't know if there's any other comments that, that you'd like to make before we adjourn?
I just wanted to say that I thank everybody on this panel for stepping up and wanting to be a part of the city. I mean, I think that that speaks volumes, that we have six people that are trying to make a voice for St. John. And I think the biggest thing is just to have people step up and vote, and, you know, the community be behind everybody. And I think that we're going to see that as community members, we're going to need each other to have our backs. And I just want to say that I think the city, there's always room for improvement, but I, you know, want to give a big shout-out to the city members, because it is a hard job, and I don't think any city member that's on right now goes to the meetings on Tuesday to make our life anything but better. So I just want to thank everybody here, and thank our current city members, and Jamie, and everybody that brings so much to our town.